Good afternoon, council. My name is Warren H. Britton. I am from Rutherford. I am a business person, and I would like to speak from the business point of view. It is so hard to hire people. And the business I am in, I have a home health and an after-school program. We have to have fingerprint from the Inspector General Office. And it goes all over the United States. Don't care where you committed a crime. And so we, I have one lady, nice lady, can work good, but she has 17 years ago. Seventeen years ago, she committed a crime, and she is a felon. I can't hire her. I have other people who did things when they were kids. Well, I say kids, but young. Not as old as I am, but um, they still have things on their record. Some of it is not that bad, but they don't have the money or the know-how to go to to finish and work out the process to get a checkbook. We do need to do something. So it's not just from their point of view. Look at our point of view, and not trying to hire people. If we got 600,000 or 6 million people dead, it makes it even harder. And some of these people don't got older who would be working. And so it's hard to hire people when you have the job for them to do if they don't qualify. So I think it's something that you do need to look at. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Lieutenant Hastings. I am the advocate on my street. Any place between Broad Street, Garden Street, Jackson, I talk to everyone. And when I first read this senior item, I couldn't find it on the council website to read. So now tonight I have the actual thing. A lot of people are scared and worried. I have people on my street who worry in jail. Um, and it doesn't make a difference whether they're black or Hispanic. And I've noticed that there are no Hispanic people here, so no one out here has reached out to them to find out what they're saying, but I know that they are afraid to even want to have a business license. Um, but they're all in our community. And the fact that you would do something from 1989, and everybody pretends like it okay. That's the same thing in the 40s and the 50s with Sumter, Black and White. We're doing the same thing over again, just a different way. And we're doing it by the shodding of people who permanently live here. My children have all left, all but one, and I'm telling the same thing. There's nothing here in Sumter for you, because as the general pointed out, you're going to fill out an application, and they just throw you the trash. They didn't even look at it. So let's, uh, organs like this that will take away somebody's right to live. And our constitution said we are guaranteed liberty and life. So we need to look at it in that point. It doesn't have anything to do with color. It has to do with what everyone is entitled to. That's right.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Brian Austin, a former school board trustee here in Sumter. I didn't have any intentions to speak tonight, but as I sat here and listened to public comments, I stand before you because the only difference I see between the ladies and gentlemen that stand behind me and the countless citizens that aren't in this room tonight is that they got caught, but we've all broken the law to a certain extent. Some of you that sit behind this dais tonight have had your own run-ins with the law. Would you not want to be able to operate your business or have your business license revoked? I stand here from the town of Rutherford where I know the struggle of my people. And I say that because in Rutherford, there's not much hope, but there should still be hope. Because I was privileged enough to attend the same alma mater as the chairman of county council. The name, with the chairman on the statue of Dr. Marcus the King that stands at the front of King's Chapel, there's an inscription on the side that says, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." This ordinance is a threat to justice everywhere. And I don't say that lightly, because what are we, what message are we sending to our children? I sat back and I thought of my time being on the school board. There were 17-year-olds that were in their senior year in high school that committed crimes, but those crimes were, they were tried as an adult. So this child has spent four years going through our career center to get a crack for a trade. And because they committed a crime, the same city that we talk about should be the place to work, live, and raise a family, now tells them, "You may not get a business license so that you can have a better future and so that you can be a productive citizen. And so that you can pay taxes to pay for this building, to pay for the chair that you sit in." That's a problem. When I was a staffer to the governor's workforce development board, there was this big influx of money called federal bonding dollars. Federal bonding dollars allow employers to seek this money to secure employees that have criminal backgrounds. So what we're telling people is that it's okay for you to be a worker and to work for us. It's a thing of systematic and systemic racism. It's okay for a person with a criminal background to be a worker, but you dare not be a business owner and think that you're on the same level or the same playing field as me. That's a problem. If we really want to see Sumter grow and we really want to be Team Sumter, then level the playing field. Words matter every day, may or may not matter in the language that we use. And I know that I'm out of town, but I would say to you, if you really and truly mean that you're a team player and you're for Team Sumter, then please remove this language because it hurts not just business owners, not just those with criminal backgrounds. It hinders the growth of this county that impacts each and every one of us. Thank you so much.
Good evening, members of council. I'm Dr. Alex Amber-Bayton. My PhD is in criminal justice. Now, my father is councilman Bayton. I had the opportunity to teach at the Sumter League Regional Detention Center. My job was to prepare my students to take the work keys test so that they could go and apply for jobs and get jobs. Major Gardner notes, "My students scored the highest scores in the history of the program." Everyone was shocked. They said, "How in the world does she have incarcerated people eating sixes and sevens on work keys? How educated people can even get that?" But sad thing is, my students could not use those scores to get a job. Okay? So for them, the only hope they have is to start a business. I've heard so many individuals come here and talk about how they made a mistake and this explained what they did. I told my students, "Forget that. Everybody in this room, whether you want to accept it or not, is one traffic stop gone wrong for being a felon. It's that easy." Okay? So do right by these people. Sumter County, you're all about growth and economic development. The current word matters. You take away someone's opportunity, you're causing them to reoffend. It's classic strange theory. When somebody cannot obtain a good way of life by legal means, they're going to do it by illegal means. And that's what this ordinance is doing. You're setting up people to reoffend, raise the crime rate, then you've got businesses looking at this and going somewhere else. All right? Thank you so much.
I'm Deirdre E. Clemmons. Um, we came to a new council meeting last year about our dirt road. Um, this used to be county maintained for several years. And then there's been about two and a half years now, the county hasn't came back. Um, we've been told it's a private road. Our plat that we have states it's a county maintained a 50-foot right away. Um, and we're just asking for help because it's been almost impassable without going in our neighbor's yard. And they have recently, this week, put up stakes where they don't want anybody going in their yard anymore because it's destroying their property. So if we get a good rain this week, it's gonna, we're probably gonna bog down and have to call tow trucks to get us out to go to work. Um, I'm a nurse. I work for the Veterans Department. And my husband works for the city of Sumter. And between the two of us, I mean, we've got to go to work. We've got a family to support. And what last year was a nuisance, now it's, if we were to have to call after a rain this week, they can't go in our neighbor's yard. It's an emergency. Um, and I've called 911 before because my husband, my son has asthma. And if I were to call them, they'd probably get stuck after a rain this week. So it's an emergency now. Um, we keep getting told that it's private, and I knew everybody was gonna look into it last year. So just me suggesting, we've paid, everybody on Kangaroo Lane has paid in $12,500 in taxes in the last three years that our road hasn't been maintained. So just a suggestion is maybe let's give that money to the man who owns the road and see if he can fix it for us. I don't know what else to do, but just asking for help again. Kangaroo Lane.
I think the county admin is ready to work in a month.
Good evening. My name is John Rand. I live in the Beckwood neighborhood. Five years ago, this council meeting, y'all had a first reading, a second reading, and a third reading said that you was on widened Beckwood roads with some sidewalks and a traffic light. Since then, that subdivision that y'all proved is being developed. Traffic is heavy. St. Anne's and St. Jude's Catholic Church is now open, and they have all kind of hours. My neighbors looked at me as I went to school board. They're like, "Hey, you got a voice. Be our voice." So that's what I'm here doing. Five years, and we don't have an answer. Yes, no. I reached out to Sergeant Dennis. She's getting me some traffic statistics. I would go to say that on May of 2023, I spoke with the council members that were responsible for this. They said they were gonna do something. I didn't hear anything. My neighbors, Jake, what's going on? October 23, I gave this packet to that board member, and we still don't have an answer. I don't know about y'all, but I'm gonna give my neighbors an answer soon after five years. That's, um, all you folks, I know this issue might be petty, what y'all are doing. But it's important. And the board says you're gonna, the council says you're gonna do it. In five years, I've seen you. I'm gonna dare say the next accident, the brutality of that intersection is on you from this day forward. Thank you very much. Hold, hold on right now. We are all around. Thank y'all. I wasn't sure how this was gonna turn out. Emotion, we hear your testimonies. I'm looking, I've never lost for words. Calvin, Betty, how you doing? And this is gonna knock a lot of y'all off their feet here. He who is without sin cast the first stone. And I don't want to speak, I don't want to speak to the choir, you know? I want to speak to those faces that I, when the crowd saw and looked into and saw the numbness in their faces, talking to my conservative opponents. If it wasn't for criminality, this nation would not be here. And we managed to get together. America was built on criminality. And so men got together and made this union start working. These young men that got before you made their union, their neighborhoods start working. We don't need this bill. Why? Because we got judges. And then the officers will come up and, oh, this, if something is so bad, they'll tell a pedophile that he cannot operate his children anymore. So now you gotta ask yourself, what is this thing really about? We talking about gentification, registration. Now we're gonna push you out your neighborhoods. Now we're gonna push you out your jobs. This thing is not just happening here. It's happening in several different cities and counties and around the nation. We see what you're doing. Enough is enough. It's always something. Why is you putting something that does not need to be, you, you gotta, you scratching something that doesn't itch? So it's got to be something else. If we get a case study, I promise you, you get the numbers. You know who this would affect adversely. You're not stupid. And those who did it before you are not stupid either. But let me tell you something, we're not stupid either. We watch you. And I promise you, I already know, these are the boards and the opposeds. And I guarantee you, they will knock on doors for anyone who touches this legislation. The people have spoken, and they made it clear. They do not want it. They do not need it. These are the citizens that say they don't need that so-called protection that you claim you're trying to provide. My brothers do the right thing. We do not need this. They already know. And we talked. I want your word, not this one. This is not the ballot, because if we become a ballot, it is just past. So whoever you gotta talk to, whatever the handles you gotta go back to, and tell them, "Hey, Mr. Business Man, if you're not gonna do this, uh, the British people out of their business, so we can hook our new business in there." Because that's what this is about. We know who's trying to take over. Go downtown. There were a lot of black businesses. Now, them people are all rooted out of their business. They're in each other's fight. We know what this is about. It ain't about no protection. Oh, if you're trying to protect those power that shouldn't be.
Good evening. Good evening, county councilwoman. Mr. McCain and, and our fellow students, fellow... Yeah. Uh, this has been an interesting meeting, and I have two points to make. One, I often thought about what, how hard it would be. Oh, I'm sorry, Jackie Hughes. I often wondered about what it was like to have a criminal record and have to try to find a job. So I thought about this. But, um, Mr. McCain, I, I, um, I want to tell you something about the older woman, which I am. And I have certainly been fooled, but I've learned that when I was growing up, I could trust people until they couldn't be trusted. And today, I don't trust people because of all the foolishness that's going on. So I support doing away with this law. I think that everybody should have a chance to better their life, if that's what they want to do, or work for someone else, if that's what they want to do. So I, I do support doing away with this. But my main reason to come tonight, um, this landing passed out a piece of paper that I would like y'all to find, because I know there's been a lot of paper given out tonight. And it's about the American Legion Post 15. You are cordially invited to the American Legion Post 15 Annual Safety Award Ceremony. And that date is the February 5th. It's not this coming Monday, but the next Monday. The time is 6:30. The location is the American Legion Building on 34th, 34 South Artillery Drive. I think everybody knows where the American Legion is. And these are the awards that will be presented. The Firefighter of the Year, EMS Technician of the Year, the Detention Officer of the Year, the Sheriff's Deputy of the Year, and the Police Officer of the Year. And I know that many of you have already attended , um, past, um, programs. There will be a supper, and you are free to invite as many people or family in your organization as you wish to attend the ceremony. That's all I have. Thank you. Did you get one?
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Jamal Jones. I'm Air Force retired. And my question to the council is there certain crimes that can be committed that the United States military will waive and give you an opportunity for a second chance in life? If our own federal government will do that with the military, even though some people don't think it's true, I know personally it's true. So if the federal government, the US military, will waive certain things to give individuals a second chance, how could you sit there and support the writing in this bill that will not provide them the same second chance?
My name is Andrea Longley. I respectfully make the request that as soon as possible, my councilperson or any of you, please do some research and tell us how many of those applications, those clearance forms that people were required to fill out actually had convictions on them? How many were then denied? Are they denied at that point? I think that we need to have a lot more information about the very first step in this process to be sure that people are not being initially denied and then afraid to go to the next step. Because if they are afraid to go to the next step, then this doesn't matter at all. They've been stopped in their tracks. So I think we need to be sure that the initial process is fair. And that what happens, we need to know as a community, when they fill out those forms and they acknowledge that they have a record, then what happens to the forms? Are they then, where are they directed in any case? Are they asked about going to see if you can get a pardon? Are they asked, "Can you possibly get an expungement?" Just think that we need to start at the very beginning of the process of people not being able to get a business license. And that's at this point my request to you. I will be back after I get that information with a lot more suggestions. I have devoted my entire life, 45 years, to representing low-income people. And I know the negative impact of convictions. And I think that we all have to acknowledge that at this point, and yes, I'm getting ready to give some credit to the other party, we have to acknowledge that in this state, at this point, we really are trying to give people second chances. That is what the government is doing. That is what the Department of Corrections is doing. Everybody is doing that. So county council cannot be the last ones who recognize that people deserve another chance. I just want us to be sure that people are not deterred at the very beginning of this process because they're embarrassed and they don't know what else to do next. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to council?
Can you say something that you already spoke? Thank you so very much. And thank you all for being patient. I would like to speak now on my dead feed, this Highway 521 that I have been working on since 98. And I hope we're getting close to getting something done. And I'm asking if you all support. If you pull the stats, you'll see how many people have been injured, killed weekly on 521. Sometimes it's four at a time. And so I ask you, the roads are bad, and we would like to get four lanes all the way to the interchange. And there's some places for people to pull over. You have, uh, flat tires. You have no place to pull. At night, it's terrible. You can't even see where you're going at night, even the lights blind you. It was not designed for the traffic that we have. When I came in 1998 to the state of Illinois Road and Street, now you better get off the road. I have to stop and get your kids. Get off the road. Get on the other side. You're walking the wrong direction. So please, whatever you all can do, we need it. And it would just benefit, remember, it would benefit everyone because those traffic trailers, they don't stop. You got people coming by, and they just get in front of you. You got to stop so they can get by, so they don't knock you off the road. Currier County is making some money not because they out there giving tickets every day. And they're still not stopping people because these people don't live here. I mean, we have two or three officers out there writing tickets every day, but it's not helping the cause. Because people, it's not the locals that they're giving tickets to. So I ask you, you all concerned, and, and we need you all here because I know it's gonna cost a little money. And we need those people who piece a road in COVID hours so they make this fair. Thank you.
Good evening. Happy New Year's, everybody. I'm First Sergeant Bowens, Liam Bowens, okay? I live in Rutherford area. I just want to pay you back off of this favor I was wanting to pay. I've been here for 23 years now. Ten years ago, I went down to DOT to explain that the way on the back on the highway of 521, there's no railing. It took me 10 years to get this railing on both sides. So anybody that rides on 521, they can see these rails. Soon as it comes over to the one lane, there's Spencer Road and Morton. It's right there on the right and left hand side. I have photographs that with this accident occurred on 521. If it's possible, I have the board to look at it. Can I post the board? Now, these photographs that you're gonna watch, I mean, you're gonna see is eight years ago. Unfortunately, thank God, no one got hurt. I live right there where the accident occurred. So when you see these photographs that you're gonna look at, you can see how dangerous it is on 521. Once they come over I-20, they're still in this fast speed mode. Once they pass, and whoo. I watched TV the other night and someone spoke about on 521, it's 65 miles. It's not 65 miles. It goes from 55 to 60, and then 45 at one point, okay? Then 30, okay? I had to put a stop sign to come out my driveway. So if you come out my driveway, you have to look right and left. And you have to step on the gas, because if you don't, you will get tagged. As I'm coming home... As I'm coming home, soon as I pass over Spencer Road, I put my signal lights on for a left-hand turn. They are still on my back. These tractor trailers don't take no care. I can let you come there and I'll fix you breakfast and you can sit there and watch, or lunch. DOT took me a long time, 10 years. You know what they kept on saying to me? We had no money. But they got money for Camden and other places, but they didn't have no money. So I came out there every other day with my lunch. And they said, well, this is Bowens is here to see. Oh, they used to take the Navy, well, he's not in office yet. My mother always taught me one thing, you always scare the cat a different way. So I used a big cat and waited on him every other day. 10 years ago, they called me up at my home and said to me, Mr. Bowens, this is what we're going to do. We're gonna put that railing on both sides of 521. And that's what we have here today. So at that point, when it comes to that one lane, it's very dangerous for everybody. I didn't do it just for me, I did it for everybody that lives in the area and plus people who's traveling from Sumter to Camden and whatever. So it's time. They been back and forth with this here, surveying for years and years. Now it's 23, and it's even haven't done nothing yet. So the proof is in the pudding with the pictures that you're watching today. I wanna emphasize one thing, I wanna thank every military man or woman that's here. I'm a First Sergeant, okay? And I have this one thing about one gentleman said about the military, the Army and that airport and the Navy made a statement, I have the proof too. And if you have a felony, they would accept it. So these gentlemen will have a chance. They didn't want to go in the military, but there's a great thing if you do. The benefits are there for you. You're young enough, and I grant you, sir, antipathy service, it's also duty service, antipathy service and all of it. But let me tell you one thing. For 23 years, with my time, 22 years in the military, I'm a First Sergeant, I took a lot of mess, but let me tell you, I made it, thank God. All you gotta do is bite the grit. So sir, with all this that you see these photographs, I would appreciate it if y'all can get on the ball and speak for someone else above you to get their road fixed. Because when I come out my, my road, if I don't look left and right, they're gonna tag me. And I have a family, and I have the family in Remedy and everybody else. So please, have a chance, go ahead. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I comment on that last, the last two? Because I also have, since I started council, have been trying to get 521 North, four lanes. And we had, they always said that the military needed four lanes to an interstate, basically had some type of catastrophe or something. So, um, I thought we had it done one time, and the, and the whole problem was Kershaw County. We were good with it, and then once we got to the Kershaw line, Kershaw would not, they wouldn't let us do it. I guess it was those big plantations or whatever down, coming in, they wouldn't let us give them land. And so the money that we had to do it went to 521 South. So now, I will say that, uh, Speaker of the House, he is very interested in paving four-lane 521, but he needs seed money and from Sumter County, and we were trying to get the seed money. If we passed a penny or something, we would probably use seed money for that to allow the state to pitch in with the state to try to get the paper.
But they didn't say the same that, but the governor had a lot of money.
Yeah, well, the, the money was, what was it? Uh, the gas tax or something? Is that where we're getting the profit? Yeah. Now let Mr. Washington speak off.
So the councilman from Dazzell is correct about that, and Ms. Britton and Mr. Glover and a few others, and remember, have met with Senator McElveen, we've met with Representative Wheeler, and the initial thought was just to widen the shoulder a little bit, but we met with them. There are 126 landowners between Spencer Road and the Kershaw line. And so what we said to them is, why negotiate with those people two times? If you are talking about expanding the shoulder and then coming back to do a four-lane, just that makes sense. And I think they took heed to that. So Representative Smith, Speaker of the House is involved, Senator McElveen is involved, Representative Will Wheeler is involved. Now, the county has no jurisdiction over state roads. 521 is a state road, and you know the difference between a state road and a county road. The state roads have the green sign, like for instance, you see King Savannah, and then there's a sign under that, a little black sign that says S and some numbers. Have y'all seen that? When you see that, that means it is a state road, not a county road. If you see the green sign only, it's a county road. If you see a blue sign, it is a private road. And so we've been having those conversations with those members of the delegation, and I think where we are now, they are attempting to move forward, and the strategy is, if we can get the seed money, like the councilman from Dazzell said, that we pave it all the way up to the Kershaw line, which puts pressure on them to get the rest done. So that's the strategy, that's where we are, and that's what we're talking about. And thank you, Ms. Britton, and thank you, Mr. Glover, for y'all's help in that regard.
Mr. Washington? Uh, I tell you, the Santee Linnis Council, government's at the behest of Merrill Smith. We now have feasibility study being conducted. But Monday night, Kershaw County Council passed, I don't know what they call it, but they are opposed to making it a whole-lane highway from Sumter to I-20. So just like you said, Kershaw County, we're gonna get paid up to the county line, but then after that, uh, Merrill texted me and said, just keep going because they don't have the final decision, so in any case, we're working on that.
And, uh, may I add, there are several of us, um, on, on County Council that are part of the regional council of government. Ms., uh, Councilman Baiton, myself, and, um, Chairman McCain. And, um, I, I think, um, I don't know whether Chairman was on there or, or, um, Baiton, but Kershaw County actually, um, retained an attorney to try to keep that progress being made toward getting 521 paved, um, from where it's already four lanes to Interstate 20. Um, but you know, we're in the process of still discussing it. It's called the TIP, Transportation Improvement Plan. Um, just like it was paved, um, uh, the four lanes were, um, constructed from Sumter to Manning, um, it can be done from Sumter to I-20, like it's been requested, but it takes some strategy. And like you said, um, Kershaw County does not have the final word, but it's a council of government, and it's an open meeting. So it's called the Santee Linnis Regional Council of Government. It consists of, um, every level of government from, um, the, all the municipalities in Sumter, Clarendon, Kershaw, and Lee, those four counties. And your meetings are usually held at Central Carolina. We've been meeting at the, the main campus. And so just watch, you know, just Google it and find out if you're interested and, and want to come to the meetings. They are public meetings. Um, we don't have many people from the public to attend, but it's an important meeting. But you can trust us to be advocates for you, and we do meet. And I just wanted to let them know that. And husband Hughes was on there also, and he and I were really advocates for that because it, it's good for Sumter, it's good for show air force space, for people traveling from Columbia to Sumter, to their jobs. So, if, you know, we do what is beneficial for the people. Thank you.
I just wanna add one. Is there any way you can run a delegation like you gave me, what they're allowing to get to the air force to come here to do the same thing with the constituents in Kershaw County? To get their voters to turn their members around and to get them to agree to do that? Because financially, that's their benefit, I mean, it's 20 right there.
I think the Speaker of the House is our best bet right now. He wants it.
Yeah.
So I mean, he, he wills the power down.
What is, you got some powerful people that own their land and on their script there.
Yeah, you know what I'm talking about.
Exactly.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak to council?
Move for German.
Well, where is your, is your?
I, I, I just, uh, I think it's important, uh, to tell people when they do something that is bad. I also think it's important to share with people when they do something that is right. And Mr. Chairman, you, um, gave people leverage to speak tonight. We spoke as a community. We weren't speaking at each other, we were speaking with each other, and that is how I like for this council to operate. It was done under your leadership, so I wanna congratulate you for that. Thank you for that.
I just wanna thank you for being here because your comments and your presence make a difference in what we do. God bless you.
Now give Sumter School District some money.
We, we getting to that, we getting to that.
If you're gonna bring that up. Last year, I predicted that the Sumter School District at the end of their fiscal year in June would have three to five million dollars. They ended up having 16.2. So.
We gotta talk about that some more, y'all. That's another night, that's another night. We got plenty to say about that.